... Robin, here. Louis. Norman, here. Hanson.
Here.
Fermi.
Here.
Kaiser.
Here.
Naples.
Sam.
Zebra.
Here.
All present, please, thank you. State of the Union. Pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the true republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, moving on to item four, Google agenda. I'll make the motion to approve the agenda.
I have a second.
Okay, we have a motion by Kelly and a second by Peter. Further discussion. If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Close. Motion will carry. Item five, approval of minutes from the regular board of education meeting, December 17. Okay, with a motion by Mike.
Okay.
A second by Mark. Any question?
I think I should have stayed on that. I guess maybe.
Okay. Any other questions? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Close. Motion will carry one extension. Item six, the public forum. The public forum provides the public with the opportunity to ask questions about or discuss issues included on the school board meeting agenda. General operating rules of the public forum will be determined by the board president. What's the number of people wishing to speak as identified as an item of the meeting? Prior to addressing the board, please clearly state your name and address and share with the board what agenda item you're speaking to the board on. At this time, is there anybody, any audience that would like to speak to the board? Yes, go ahead.
Okay.
Yeah.
Ms. President and all board members, my name is Bernie Kramer from 2150 East State Highway 153, and I want to give special recognition to the board for their agenda item on 4K going back to one half-day instruction. I think it's a common sense thing to do, and it's logical, and it's best for the student and for the instructor, and it'll be something that I'll just keep on giving every year. It's bad enough with kindergarten sometimes, but these 4K, I believe it's a good move to make. And then item two, I'd like to address the funding. The district 4K provider get a little more equality. Presently, they give $2,450 for each student. The provider gives approximately 50% of the amount that the school district gets to the state. And no, there's been no increase over a number of years, and they have to provide the infrastructure and the competitive, just trying to get an instructor. Now, our school district, I'm sure, cannot do it for $2,450 a year. There's no way that they got, they'll have to pay more and benefits and whatever else is entailed. So, I mean, and then you got $2,500 left over for each student, and they say, I was always told that's for administration, but I think that you're, for administrative work that you do, you're out of line. And with that being said, I would say that if you could bulk that up there on the $3,500 to $4,000 range for each student, I mean, you'd have to get some equity in here. I mean, just because they got daycare to draw on and they use that, and they had trouble with instructors when I checked into it three, four years ago, then they sure can't pay them any kind of benefits. So, with that being said, I think it's just good for the whole community. I don't think we should be so cheap to try to go to work and just see how cheap we can get it. I think we should be leaders in the community, and we should look at the community situation, and I would hope that somebody would really investigate the situation and maybe come up with a more equitable answer. Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay. Thank you. Anybody else? Again, anybody else? Okay. We're moving on to item seven, special presentation, technology update. Brady.
Kristin's gonna join me here, and it's very crowded, and when we were setting this up, I told her we were able to cut it down to nine slides this year, and then from 12, and she just informed me that's just because I put more stuff on each of the slides. So, every year, we just like to provide kind of a state of the state early for technology in the district, some new initiatives we've got going on, if for no other reason than to empower all of you. When people in the community might ask things that are going on, this is certainly, you know, a big issue and a big topic to cover. So, to start with, the technology department is certainly an interesting and unique department in our school district because we really live in two different worlds. We live in part in the operational side of the school district, so I've got tremendous staff that works for me on the break and fix side, the putting things together, and then we've got the teaching and learning side, which is something maybe a little more unique that Christie and I have, both being former teachers in the tech department, to kind of harness both of those areas. So, this year, you know, our goals every year are kind of split between those two things, and kind of a mixture between the teaching and learning side and that true operational side, kind of living in both those worlds. A couple of unique things for the tech department and what kind of our day-to-day looks like, what my staff deals with on a daily basis. Managing accounts is a big deal, so all new students, new staff, updating accounts, updating student placement in those accounts is a big deal. Software has ballooned. Some of those are by our own doing, some of those are by state mandates, state testing. Obviously, that's kind of become the way of the educational world, so we've had some pretty significant updates and increases in the amount of software we manage. And then, obviously, on the daily basis, my staff deals with tickets and the break and fix side of things, of things going on in all three of the buildings. I put on there just some unique information in terms of what we deal with on a daily basis. It's a lot of smart boards, our PA system's been a big one, security, obviously, over the last year, getting accounts created, set up, all that stuff has been a very large deal. One of our big goals this year was refining some of our processes, so over the last few years, the tech department's undergone some huge changes and transformations with upgrading our infrastructure. Our infrastructure's at a really good spot right now, which we are very, very fortunate, lucky, and every vendor I talk to, you know, they're a little surprised by that, but we've done a really nice job in getting ourselves to a point that's really manageable right now. So, this year, we moved more into refining some of our pieces. A couple of highlights on here, one of them is budgeting. It's always very tough in the technology world when large expenses come on and off in the district, and in effort to make that more palatable and marketable for our business manager and our superintendent and all of you, we put together a five-year rolling budget to try to forecast out larger problems coming up in future years. And then, this year, we also had the initiative of tying our budget back to our goals, which, you know, we thought was a very important piece. If we're gonna spend money on it, it certainly is something that we want to place some value on and a high level of importance on. And then, the other thing, just to point out on there, our tickets, you know, one of my big selling points over the last few years on upgrading some of our systems is to cut down on the number of tickets, because the less tickets that my guys have to deal with on a daily basis allows us to move more into what I would call kind of phase two of the job, which is the projects, the large-scale investments of our time that take days, sometimes weeks, to investigate. By cutting down our tickets and being able to move some time over to that, the part that's been pretty awesome to see come to fruition is we've been able to keep a lot of our own projects in-house as opposed to what a lot of school districts have to do, which is hire Hartland, Dirks, RMM, somebody else to complete a lot of those projects. You know, we've been pretty fortunate and been able to keep those in-house.
All right, so student safety and privacy, we keep, we take very seriously and keep students on task when they're at school, so some of these initiatives help us do that. So, we have a leveled Chromebook filtering, so at the bottom here, you see the green, yellow, and red, and it basically meets students where they're at and what level they need to be filtered and kept on task. We have Securely 24 auditor, which is meant to be proactive for monitoring our students' email, drive, documents. If any kid starts talking about self-harm, it alerts the proper people to help us. And we have Chrome Tools, which is a tool for teachers to help keep their students on task in class. They can see their students' screens, and so you, our parents on the board, use Securely, which is the same company, to watch what your students do online. You can look at what videos they've gone to, what websites, any Google searches they've done, the exact words they've put in. And then, we're gonna be doing some online safety presentations, so more than just digital citizenship, but having our kids have a sense of keeping themselves safe and secure in their information and identity for themselves.
The second big piece is obviously staff safety and the big initiatives around staff safety that we have going. Christie took a ton of time this fall to develop student data privacy guidelines, and why that's in the staff category is it really falls kind of under that data governance category of saying, what are we allowing our staff to use and what are we allowing them to take student information out and use? So, developed a large-scale plan for that and what we are comfortable allowing our staff to enter student data in. And then, the other big thing is the Wired Conference, something that Christie and I are pretty proud of. We, this year, as opposed to taking our staff and sending them out to tech conferences, which are great, but very expensive, this year, Christie and I partnered with Wassa, D.C. Everest, and we'll be having the second annual one here. We got about $10,000 in donations to run it on a yearly basis from some local banks, and it is held at NTC. It's a massive technology conference, and really, our goal is to kind of pool the resources of all of those schools, and this year, we'll, safety's gonna be a big, big push in that conference.
FabLab uses, in addition to the high school classes that use the FabLab, we have our elementary students doing, they're making ornaments, so when a kid goes online and designs something on their computer, they're using different fonts and different colors and size, and they gotta center things, but then the kid gets a piece of a tangible ornament or a physical thing that they built on a computer. It really surprises the kids when they see something from a computer in the real world. So, both, all the kids in second and third grade do that. And then, the other thing I wanted to highlight on here is our community nights. We tried to offer them throughout the school year, and the most popular one was the curpage board one, and so you just see pictures on there of people from the community that came in and built their own curpage board and designed it, and we run that through State Education.
Every year, I like to give an update on kind of our ChromeSaver stuff. One of the things that we're pretty excited about and proud of is this year, the tech department, including Kerry Lashinsky, who does a lot of the day-to-day from the high school IMC of our ChromeSavers in-house repair. We're gonna be presenting at Brainstorm on how our setup is to school districts around the states, because I think we've got a, we've got a pretty unique thing going for how we did that.
Our stats there on the bottom, one thing we're really proud of, and the library helps us do this, just with the workflow, we get, when students break advice, we get it back to them as soon as we can at the lowest cost we can. So, since our students are doing the repair, the only cost to the student is the part, and you'll see the numbers for the cost to the student is very low.
And the overall amount of repairs that are done that have a cost on them has dropped every year. You can see, you know, it's something that the class and Mr. Lashinsky take a lot of pride in, you know, I mean, obviously, this is not done as a way to try to make money. We're just trying to get the device working back in their hands as fast as, as fast as we can. And the last thing, just to highlight, I mentioned earlier, you know, really, our move from when we can move away from the day-to-day and be able to furnish our own projects, some major ones just to highlight, the teacher refresh of laptops was a really big deal done across the last year and a half and finished up last year. That has tremendously cut down on our tickets, and our goal on some of those was front-end education and troubleshooting, so, you know, trying to give teachers and staff the tools to be able to troubleshoot. It's not that we aren't willing to help or don't want to help, but every, you know, time we can save some of that, we can take a little bit more time working on some of those larger-scale projects. The other big one that are coming up over here, our radio system, we just finished and have been very, very happy with the new digital radio system, upgrading from the old analog one we had. You know, our principals would tell you, it's nice to be able to actually communicate across buildings now and not have to go and like find a window or open space. And then, we've got a couple of big security audits and some data governance coming up in the next school year, so that's kind of our next phase of things is, and if you watch the news, you know, that's certainly a large-scale thing, cyber attacks, keeping our network safe, keeping our student information safe is really our next big push that we're working through for this next, next school year.
One of the nice things, and I just didn't, I was just glancing at it quick, is the upgrade you did in the pool with the audio piece, that, I mean, that was a big community piece. I know we have a couple swimmers in the, in the audience right now, but that was a great piece approved by the board. That's up and running now, it's operational, and it sounds great, very loud.
Nice to have some first, first-class, you know, nice equipment in there, absolutely. So, that is kind of the update in the whole. Be happy to take any questions if you have.
Skyward's going through a brand-new toll enhancement, first one in 20 years.
Correct.
Delays, costs to the district?
Yes, so the plan right now, I talked to them this fall about it at the conference, they are very behind in Wisconsin right now. Wisconsin has much larger state requirements put on of how the system has to be built. Skyward has contracts with states in a lot of places, like they, you know, have tried here, and some of those states are operational. I would guess we are probably two to three years away from it, and I would guess it will be somewhere in the $15,000 to $20,000 range when that does roll out. It is a beautiful system, but there are certainly a lot of, in Skyward, you purchase modules, and the more modules you have, and I will say, we are definitely drinking the Kool-Aid in here, we've got a lot of the modules, the longer it takes, because some of those modules aren't built yet, Special Ed being the big one, they are not ready for that rollout, so for a couple of years.
So, will that impact your five- to six-year budget plan that you've already?
Potentially, yeah. So, I would adjust, so in two to three years, once we know, they keep pushing out, they said two to three years ago it was gonna be two to three years, and this fall, they just keep saying that, two to three years is kind of ongoing, so at that point, yes, we would absolutely build that in.
And one of the main reasons, when I was talking to certain vendors, that it's taking us longer than other states is Wisconsin's a little bit unique, is that we don't have one consolidated state student management system. There was an attempt at that a few years ago, but many states go with one system, which makes it easier for that kind of rollout.
Thank you.
Do you think they turn around on Chromebooks and stuff, that roughly how long do they take?
Sometimes the kid gets it back the same day or the next day.
It's usually, so it depends on when the next kid in class falls, and, you know, there might not be a kid there until fifth period, and it is brought in in second period, so, but the kids have the ability to fix it and get everything back operational within their class period of being there. It's just a matter of when the next kid comes in.
The majority of kids probably get it at home, and so they bring it right away in the morning, and then we fix it at some point during the day so they get a checkout device, and when they come back to bring that checkout device back at the end of the day, there's a stop.
Typically, you know, most school districts send them out, so you put it in a box, you send it out to, our big one around here is in Milwaukee, but then you got a two-to-three-week turnaround time, and obviously, the cost is significantly higher than the cost of, you know, a little part of that.
Our kids have gotten really good at taking them apart and putting them back together.
Very good.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Brady, I'd send you a...
Yeah, I'll pull it up here.
Thank you very much.
We'll get your operation.
Yep, we do have, okay, so this is Kim Larson, she's the chief operating officer of Boys and Girls Club of Wassa, Bay of Wassa area. I know you have, still have other people at the Boys and Girls Club here, but the impetus for this presentation was a meeting that actually a board member helped me set up with the Boys and Girls Club, but it happens when I walked in for the meeting, that we actually know each other from like, I don't know, like decade and a half ago, when I worked in the Wassa School District, but I didn't know that, so I'm like, oh, yeah, okay, I remember, okay, this, that, and this service. So, I had asked, it's based on a very good meeting, just for a presentation to the board, just to have some information about the what of this particular program, not that there's any commitments or anything else like that. We just had some really good initial discussions, but to move that along, I think the information is the first part, so.
Sure. Thank you very much for having me. Matt Jameson, our CEO, and Alexis Radlau, the D.C. Everest site director, are with me tonight. So, we just wanted to give you an overview of what the Boys and Girls Club does in our community and who we serve. So, right now, we have three locations. We are at our main site at 1710 North Second Street. We also have our D.C. Everest middle school site that we've been at for 11 years, and our D.C. Everest Green Hack Fieldhouse that we've been at for just over 20 years. We provide after-school and out-of-school, non-school day programming, as well as our comprehensive center programming. We were designed as a teen center in 1997, so we serve grades four through 12.
What are the three locations again?
The D.C. Everest middle school, the Green Hack Fieldhouse, and our Wassa site at 1710 North Second Street.
Down, down?
Right up at Bridge Street. So, tying in with Boys and Girls Clubs of America, comprehensive programming, we provide academic success programming to help support the academic day. So, kids are in your schools from whatever time until 3:00-ish, they would come to the Boys and Girls Club and help provide high-yield learning activities, power, which is to help support homework success, and other educational opportunities in everything from STEAM to career activities. Our goal really there is to support their academic success in and out of the school day. Career character and leadership programming, we want to make sure that our kids are making good decisions, not only as young kids in our community, but also as adults when they become your future employees or parents in your, in your school district, focusing on healthy lifestyles and good decision-making. Whatever those healthy lifestyles are like for those kids is what we want to help support, and sometimes that means breaking out of habits that are in their home, in their families.
So, would you say that the Boys and Girls Club, just to kind of help the board, that you specialize in after-school until parents go home from work?
Absolutely.
Is that, is that like a core part of what you do?
For a lot of families, absolutely. We are, we can provide that gap in, in opportunities for kids, so they are not necessarily going home to an empty house, that they aren't necessarily taking the bus home and getting home when there's no one there, or making poor decisions at home, either using those Chromebooks and bringing them in for repairs, or finding things online that they shouldn't be finding. In Wassa, it can be, you know, wandering around downtown, going to the mall, or maybe not so much the mall anymore, but downtown, getting on the bus, going places that they really shouldn't and making decisions that they shouldn't, because there's no one there to help support and reinforce everything that you do during the school day. So, our job is to help provide those resources to them, certainly not daycare. We provide those activities to fourth through 12th grades, so our kids are really very capable of making decisions on their own. Everything at our Boys and Girls Clubs are very independent choice. So, the idea is that they self-select what they want to participate in or what they don't want to participate in. Today, for example, we had kids going, did about 20 kids go up to the school forest for the day. We did, we had a three-on-three basketball tournament, we had kids participating in the art room with a cookies and canvas activity, and, you know, our goal is to really make sure that they're active, healthy, positive decision-making adults in their future.
Yes, I see. They used to be downtown, like how many people, is there busing to get there, or they just get to the schools or?
There sure is busing. We provide busing from 11 different Wassa schools to get to that site, and then we are right on the bus line, so they, if they leave our building by about 5:37, they can get on the bus and get toward the entrance.
So, would you say that these same sort of services would be available in summer as well, like somebody has their kids like me go to summer school, and they get done in noon?
Sure, absolutely. So, our D.C. Everest middle school is, or provides summer school, post-summer school activities, so for those four weeks at the D.C. Everest middle school serves fourth through eighth grade students. We are open from 11:35 until 5:30 PM, so that we provide lunch for the kids, and all of the school year activities that we do can then roll into the summer, they just are a little bit more summer-like, so we might go to the pool, we might go to the parks, we might go hiking at Mountain Bay at Ramon, and then we're there until 5:30 when a lot of families are done with work. Again, the idea is not daycare, it's to reinforce what they're learning or what they maybe need a little bit extra support for.
How are, how are you funded or supported?
We have lots of different funding sources, everything from grants to our own special events, to individual corporate and business donations. We also provide career launch activities to help make sure that our kids are prepared for life after high school, that they have a plan, but that they also have the skills that they need to achieve that plan. And then, at every one of our sites, there's an after-school snack, because some of our kids are crappy kids, and then we provide dinner at our main site, but on non-school days, we're able to provide breakfast, lunch, and a midday snack as well. So, at the D.C. Everest middle school site, after summer school, it would be lunch and then a late afternoon snack as well. We help them learn to cook too, through a program called Team Fizzy. If you've never been to a Boys and Girls Club, I would strongly encourage you to stop in and take a look at what we do at any one of our three sites. Each site is so, so different. Our main site was built as a traditional, it's called a clubhouse, traditional Boys and Girls Club. It's a standalone facility. It's one of the only, it's the only after-school program that has a traditional standalone facility that is dedicated to just kids. There are lots of great other programs in, in communities, but this building is designed just for kids, and that's really important, when they walk in, that they really feel that sense of belonging. For a lot of kids, that club is their second home, and they, they choose to come to the club, they have to go to school, so it's, we really, especially on days like today, we get to see so many faces, and the club brings together kids from all over the community. I'll tell you in just a couple minutes about one of those kids.
This school's got dance-like personality, is it still open or not?
No, this is the first year that we chose not, that we, for the safety of our staff, our volunteers, and our kids, we really have been taught about that for a long time, but we feel like it's not safe for kids to get to school, it's not safe for them to come to the Boys and Girls Club. We want to make sure that their safety is first and foremost, and, you know, I'm sure you've driven down some of those streets and you wish that you didn't have to be on the road, so you pack four or five kids in your vehicle and you second-guess yourself even going, going to work, and, because we're also not daycare, right? We want to make sure that we're not utilized as daycare. So, this is a sample program guide for our D.C. Everest middle school site. Again, this was open about 11 years ago. We partnered with the, with the administration, the teachers, we really built a planning committee. We got that support from inside that building out, and we really, we talked with the kids, we talked with teachers, with parents, with community partners. We wanted to make sure that it was something that kids wanted to do, and one of the best things that we are doing right now, thanks to Alexis and the staff at the middle school, is really listening to our kids. We, the Boys and Girls Club drives very, very hard into the kids' voice, and we want to make sure that they understand that not only is this their second home, but that their voice is heard and what they want to do within reason. Disney World always comes up on that wish list, but what they want to do is really what we can, what we can make happen, whether it's partnering with Palomas Martial Arts or with Johnson Delly Wood Turners, trying to give them unique experiences that they just can't find anywhere else. Partnerships, that's a good segue. So, we really partner with not only businesses, with Johnson Delly Wood Turners, but our number-one partners are the D.C. Everest School District and the Wassa School District. Not only do they help us reach and connect with kids and families, but we, they understand that we are reinforcing what those kids are getting during the school day. They come in and use our building for trainings. The staff stop down and talk to the D.C. Everest middle school staff. There's a connection at the Green Hack Fieldhouse also with all the faculty there. NTC, Girl Scouts, and our Central Grade List, and I just, they're not supposed to be on grade lists, I just threw together a generic shortlist of, just to give you an idea, that we certainly don't think that we do this alone by any stretch. We wouldn't be serving 1,900 kids on an annual basis with our membership and another 5,000 throughout the community through other, other opportunities that we did this alone. So, it's everything from the Chamber to United Ways Partnership for Youth, Helping Out on Town, anything that connects to kids and families and that really deepens the impact that the Boys and Girls Club can have on their lives. So, one of the questions that we get is who do we serve? So, this is our 2018 numbers, our 2018, 2019 numbers should be ready in the next couple of weeks. So, we asked about transportation. Almost 600 kids use that bus, and that was last year when we were, we were serving six different buses, so now we've expanded to 11. 47,000 meals and snacks provided, and that's everything from those cooking classes to after-school snack, breakfast, breakfast, lunch, and dinner. We serve about 1,900 registered members on an annual basis, and I'm happy to say that that number is on trend again for this year too. We have about 10 full-time staff and 30 part-time staff, and over 350 volunteers that walk through our doors on an annual basis as well, so there's really that connection to the, to the bigger picture and to the community, and whether that's mentoring, that's volunteering, that's helping with special events, people really like working with kids, and that makes that, makes that opportunity possible. So, I just wanted to share a couple of survey results with you. So, people always ask, you know, what does the Boys and Girls Club do? So, we, the Boys and Girls Club at Green Hack, we actually are calling the Club of Green Hack. It's designed for teens, it's eighth through 12th grade. There's anywhere, anywhere between 40 and 80 kids there on a, on a daily basis, and that, that ranges, depends on the day, depends on the season, what else is going on. So, 100% of them report that they have a positive relationship with a staff member or volunteer. That's huge. The club really brings together kids from the junior high and the senior high together. The junior high kids can either get the activity bus or they can walk, but they're getting along with people who are different than them, they're feeling, they really feel like this is their space. They're artworked on the wall, they're learning to dance, they're teaching each other how to dance, and 92% of them have a positive role model, they believe that they are a positive role model for other members. One of my favorites is that 100% of them have set or reinforced their, their decisions for life after high school at the club. This is our D.C. Everest middle school, also right on track with the Fieldhouse. This is just sixth and seventh grade during the school year. During the summer, it's 4th through 8th grade. It's any kid, this site is open to any kid that attends summer school. So really it reinforces that opportunity about summer school because it's by choice then, and then you get to participate at the club. So during the school year, it's anywhere between 60 and 90 kids at the middle school and anywhere between 30 and 50 kids every day during summer school. So I mentioned, what is, I was telling you about one of our club members. So her name is Malaya. She is a sophomore at DCRS. She is one of the kids that I know has attended all three of our sites. So she started attending the Crown and Usmark site in Wassa, then she moved into the DCRS Middle School when she was in 6th grade. She moved over to the Field House site, and she moved into 9th or 8th grade, and is now at the Field House site. She is on track to, well, this year she is, we're kind of grooming her to come out here for the year when the time is right for her, when she kind of ages up. But she had the opportunity to go on a Herb Cole philanthropies DC learning during the last year. And I will never forget the day that her mom, we were leaving on a Sunday, the bus was leaving at 3:00 AM, they needed to be there, 3:00 AM on Monday, the bus needed, they needed to be dropped off at the club Sunday evening. And she was so tough, and she said, "I'm gonna go, and it's gonna be great, and with all my friends." Her mom turned around to walk out the door, and she just melted. And she couldn't decide, she said that the club means so much to her, and she wants to be a part of this and experience this with her club family, but she didn't want to leave her mom. She'd never been outside of the city, the county, or the state, so to be traveling halfway across the country, 22 hours on a bus was a little bit overwhelming for her. She eventually did decide that she was gonna go. She said that the experience changed her life, and she will tell you that she knew that that opportunity wouldn't have been possible anywhere other than the Boys and Girls Club. And whether it's a trip to Washington DC or touring a business in town and deciding that that's what your career path is gonna be, or going through a decision-making course and understanding that the decisions that you make today will impact your life forever, the Boys and Girls Club really reinforces everything that you do during the school day and supports those kids as they become good caring, busy, community leaders, whether they are your future parents, doctors, lawyers, teachers. And it's hard to remember when you have that 13-year-old with a giant attitude and energy chip on their shoulder, that someday they could be on your payroll. We're really excited to be here with you tonight and sharing our stories. Any questions that I can answer for you?
What are the costs of the parents?
So our cost for the membership is $20 for the year, and that is a calendar year. So our, I'll pass this out, it's a good question. So our, in this packet, you'll find our sample membership application, our impact report from last year, as well as an investment guide and newsletter. But that key covers everything that they get inside the building. The only additional cost that they would ever have would be field trips.
Field trips.
Yeah.
I was gonna say, the parents would pay for the field trips.
Yeah, yeah.
But you're saying you get all those plus meals and every $20 membership for the year?
Yep, we are going to, we'll be rolling out a small summer fee to help offset some of our summer costs. During the summer alone, we serve over 1,000 different kids. And so those, we'll be implementing a $25 summer fee to help offset some of those costs. But even if you came in today and you filled out your scholarship application, your membership would be $5. It's not about the dollars that we get from that, it's about the investment, kind of the spin in the game. There's something that you said, as soon as you pay for something, you're much more likely to utilize it, to respect it, to understand that it means something.
Is there a certain number of students that you need before you start a program?
No, we, when we started martial arts, when we partnered with Palmas, the first day, the kids had to sign up, they paid $5 for that, that covered their t-shirt and their belt. And when they paid that fee, we had three kids, by the end of it, we had 15, went through the program. And so we just actually did their next adult picking ceremony too, which was really cute to see. If you, if you are interested in anything that we talked about tonight, our social media is, our, you guys, the marketing director does a great job of capturing those moments, and all of that stuff is on our Facebook page.
So the middle school facility that you use in DCRS, is that the repurposing of current classrooms and school space? Or do they put their own?
Great question. So at the DCRS Middle School, it's shared space. And what works best in the school site is when you have your own dedicated space. So we, our main hub is the commons, and then we get to use IMC, the theater as scheduled, the FCE room for Team Cuisine. They have a big, beautiful backyard that all of our sites are, are in the area of, and then classrooms that we use them. And the Green Heck Field House, we have the old weight balcony upstairs, that is also a shared space during the day with a different classroom for a different class, but really the main entrance side is that kids can play.
How long does it take to get that all set up and get going? I mean, you know, we're right now in the middle of the school year, like we are, I mean, is it better to look at something like a summer program, see how that kicks off before you implement it?
So that's a great question. Typically, what we would do is take a look at surveys and survey at any, at either our Franklin site that we had here for five years or for our DCRS Middle School, the best thing we did was ask the kids what they wanted, and ask parents, and ask teachers. And really, our goal was to get an understanding of making sure that people wanted a Boys and Girls Club there. And then it was to figure out, schedule-wise, what worked. Some of those questions include, you know, are kids going home alone? What time would you pick kids up? Would you use this service? How many days a week? Not committing any money to anything, but really to get that sense of what that would look like. So to answer your question, the timing is really based on what that survey shows.
Sure. Any other questions?
So there is no way that you would ever bus like Mosonee students to like Green Heck?
So there was a time when we decided that we should bus kids from the Green Heck Field House to the Crown and Usmark site, and the kids spoke with their feet. There is something so special about kids being in their clubhouse, in their second home. And if you have Mosonee students, they want their own space here.
So that means no?
To be honest, they won't go. They pay their money.
There was a question, yes.
Yeah, they like to come to the main site for field trips, and we open that up to school. We typically have the 4th graders come, and they come in and hang out for the day. But for them to come every day after school, it's just, there's something special about that. And you should take great pride in that, that they have that pride in their, in their schools.
Anybody else?
Well, I want to thank you because I always was curious about Boys and Girls Club.
Well, thank you for having me. And please, our doors are always open for a tour. Our kids get much better tours than we do, and they can speak much, much more fluently about what they like about it, and they'll tell you their favorites, and they also tell you things that they don't like about it. So if you want to visit any one of our three sites, please don't hesitate to reach out to us, we'd love to help you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Moving on to the student board report.
Yep, our, our student rep is busy, extremely busy with school-related activities, so I can zip through it pretty quickly, but there is, there was an NHS induction ceremony, which is also there, blood drive, which I took part in, not in the picture, but I was sitting in the one way to the right over there. It was great to see all those 57 donations. I think it's a wonderful program run by the students, and that is great. The performance, I was at both performances. Actually, this talks about the variety show, the terms of variety show was just outstanding. For those that were at, at the event, it was just amazing, both days. And there were different performances on both days, which I thought was great, especially somebody going on two days. So they definitely had different songs, and a teacher, Justice Michael Jackson, which was a great way to end the event. So those are there, and I'm talking about. Just some information about FCCLA, the FFA, and the DECA, and multiple sledding events and slagging events that have occurred. Along with some pictures there about those organizations giving back and working with donations in the community. Different pictures, different things going on with the FFA, always very inactive organization in Mosonee, which is great. Several different donations there, several pictures from the FFA, some great information in your packets that way. The MHS basketball, one night, I wasn't there, but I did hear about it. Those things are always very active in every district I've ever been in, so very fun events to get everybody back together. Athletic report, actually, just the other night, I can speak to that in mine a little bit, but some wonderful events going on. Stormgirls Hockey is doing absolutely outstanding, you can see their record there, they're doing amazing. I was at Boys Hockey, I win the other night against Anago. Wrestling team isn't listed here. As a former wrestling coach myself, I'll bring it up, they've been wrestling very well. I feel like all weight classes, but they're wrestling very well. Basketball, also having a lot of success, so.
All right, any questions? All right, we're moving on to item nine, consent agenda. Building Committee Consent Agenda.
Okay, the building, and even at 5:33 tonight, and you have what's in here? We did not have the book on it yet. Steve has a new package, if you have any questions? He updated? We got some new, well, Steve would know better than I, so hope for the little summary of it, Steve.
Sure. Just a couple quick things, there's some next of projects, and basically, just seeing the first sheet is pool upgrades. We basically moved all the old controls over Christmas break, shut the pool down, better electric, chosen to do the work. Everything has now been installed, everything is operational, they did a great job and haven't any issues. So it's nice to be able to knock it out when the buildings are down. And putting the back pieces, some boiler work we're working on, we're relocating an existing unit that you see here that's been in service about 12 years. So that's basically being reworked, new controls and new pieces put into that boiler. That'll be hopefully fired up this week, and then that should take us online at our high school. So other than all the piping was done, and hopefully it takes off without any problems, that's what I'm telling you. So we'll find out hopefully this week.
Okay, thank you. Item B, Personnel.
Personnel committee met tonight. We currently have one job vacancy, which is in the Food Service Department for 2.5 hours. Since we just got our new Food Services Director on board just about a month ago, we're going to be looking to hire another position here shortly. Next item, which was unanimously approved, is the acceptance of the 8th grade ELA Teacher Retirement, which is Mrs. Kowalski. So she has been in Mosonee for over 30 years teaching, so basically her entire career, and we certainly thank, thank her for all of her years of time dedication to the Mosonee School District and all of her future endeavors. The next item was a Support Staff Handbook Revision Regarding Overtime. So with that, we've had an update to the Support Staff Handbook in regards to overtime language, just making it required to have prior authorization for overtime by supervisor or management. That motion was also unanimously approved. The next item was the Fab Lab Summer Instructor Strife, and this decision was also unanimously approved. Brady gave us a synopsis, an overview of this, this area, so three teachers will be brought on for that for a total of $4,950. However, this supports us an opportunity to publicize our Fab Lab and what we are doing here, showcase our opportunities, and also potential of bringing in some revenue for that as well. Next item is the motion, or I'm sorry, the movement of a head coach from Class A, Class B to Class A in Appendix G. The Personnel Committee unanimously decided to table this decision until March, till we have another compensation committee meeting. We decided to do this because last month, we had another situation where we had a request to have a position added, and then we had this situation this month, so it's becoming more clear that the Appendix G needs to have some, a bit of revision so that we don't always have these individual requests coming forward. The next item is additional resignations, retirees or hires, and we actually just had another recent retirement letter submitted, and this is for Linda Vista. So again, another great elementary school teacher with 30-plus years of service in the Mosonee School District, raised her entire family here, went through the system as well in Mosonee. So we again thank Linda for all of her years of service to the Mosonee School District and wish her well and all of her future endeavors as well. Extracurricular hires, those are also in your packet to see, which was a middle school wrestling assistant coach, and then a middle school girls' basketball coach, that you can read when necessary. And that is all we have for the Personnel Committee.
Thank you. Moving on to item C, the Finance Committee Consent Agenda.
So the Finance Committee tonight met for an additional half hour outside the normal half hour. So we sat down for an hour because of the community use of district facilities conversation that began tonight. So there's, there's multiple moving parts today. Probably the lowest hanging fruit is making a decision and having our superintendent work with the YMCA to determine what, what is the future of the management of the school, what that would look like. It also recognizes that in order for us to be compliant with regulation or statute and how we fund community use of our facilities, we're, we're not in alignment right now. And in order to do that, we utilize Fund A. So part of being able to have Fund 10, build Fund 80 requires us to set price for different things within the school, whether it be our fields, or our pool, or the auditorium, or classroom, or the Fab Lab. So instead of going through each of those things, our committee tasked the superintendent and his staff to come back next month to the Finance Committee with a recommendation for what the price for the use of each of those things are, as well as recommended costs to charge non-community functions within our facilities, what, what the cost of rental or service fee of that would be. And lastly, that will, well, things to come, there will be a recommendation, most likely moving forward, that Fund 10 will build Fund 80 for the use of community functions, and then automatically quarterly, Michelle will transfer 50% of those Fund 80 dollars from Fund 10 to Fund 46 to start building funds to be able to have maintenance budgets for, for facilities. One of the last things that was, that was part, and I would just ask you to chew on it for the next month before it's brought forward, is language in our policies that would say that the district does not fund community meetings, projects, functions. So the community, Fund 80 will have to fund community use of our facilities with one, with the exception that, without border control. And the purpose behind that was, there could be really bad things that happen in our community, and we need to use our facilities as a shelter or something like that, and having the ability to access funds would still be important for this board. But to put the language in place in our, in our policies that aligns with DTI's expectations and have our district do that work, so that, no decision was made in the Finance Committee. We expect it to be made next month and brought to this, to this board next month to set that policy language in the direction to our staff. Item, the next item was business office furniture purchase. The business office, if anybody goes and visits it, it's got very, very old furniture that's, has, has many issues to it, and the area is not set up very effectively for our staff to work there. So we received three, three different bids, so to speak, of what it would take to renovate that area and provide appropriate furniture for our staff. Let me put, let me, so exactly where they are. You'll see there's three quotes. The first quote's for $13,314, and that's for refurbished, used furniture. The second quote is for $16,642. Our committee unanimously approved, quote, "Two for $16,642," and felt that appropriate, that we're not buying used furniture. From that, thank you.
Thank you. Next report, Curriculum Standards Committee Consent Agenda.
Thank you, the Curriculum Standards Committee met tonight, reviewed and approved the December 2019 minutes. Unanimously approved a 2021 extended, I'm sorry, 2022 Extended Field Trip to Greece with an art curriculum in particular. Two of the, three of categories to the National Art and Design Standards, two are covered by the trip, creating and responding. It's a 10-day trip, involved really with travel. And it's through education first, a well-known, well-established, longtime travel organization that puts the safety of kids first, including even pivoting if something were deemed to be dangerous geographically or otherwise. The committee also approved unanimously an extended field trip to Nashville for the DECA National Conference if one or more students qualify, as well as then choose to go. So we don't know at this stage whether or not somebody will be selected to go, qualify or not, and then if they can, if they do, if they choose to go. We had a discussion about foreign language in the elementary school, and learned that actually in 5th grade, all kids are exposed to some Spanish. My question was whether or not, or what, what led to the changes that the Mosonee School District made, removing foreign language starting in kindergarten? And that happened in 2011 due to the ACT changes and budget issues. But even if we were to make any changes to it, there'd be a lot, there are a lot of demands for staff, as well as students' time, particularly in the areas of art, music, PE, technology guidance, and IMC. So, you know, there's a limited schedule availability. But it was a good conversation, and I don't know that it's gonna go anywhere. I did let the board, the committee know that I did let the board, the committee know that while I have an interest in it, I have a greater interest in kids having familiarity, exposure, and most importantly, proficiency in math, science, and English. So foreign language is great, important, relevant. I'm glad we have it where we do, but we need to make sure that we have proficiency in the other areas as well. Thank you.
Thank you. This time I need a motion through consent agendas.
I'll second that.
We have a motion by Mike and a second by Jess. Further discussion. If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion will carry. Item 10, discussion of possible decision and approval of the monthly voucher list.
So the Finance Committee spent time tonight. We changed things up a little bit. We get from Michelle, some of the highlighted, more expensive expenses that haven't paid within the last month. Couple that I just want to highlight for the board that's, you're aware. Premier excavating for $43,775, and that's for the excavation and removal of the homes that were purchased to the east of the middle school. Also associated with that is a check for $11,323 to Mabo Systems, which is the asbestos abatement, which apparently we got to remove that before Jean could go bulldoze the homes. And then also because it's coming up next month is, we make three payments annually to the YMCA, so not quite quarterly. This most recent check was for $49,099.42. And this highlighted voucher list is available to anybody who wants to take a look. And with that, I would make a motion to approve the monthly voucher list.
I'll second that.
Okay, so a motion by Matt and a second by Mike.
Could I just ask, what related to eight or take this, what do you get for that $49? Except for, otherwise discussion just.
I mean, I think the answer is relatively simple. We went from homes on a property to homes gone and filled in.
No, he's talking about the YMCA.
YMCA.
I was actually thinking the same thing in relationship with the thing we have tonight.
Right, it's a pool manager. Pool manager.
That's right. A pool manager in life.
Pool management.
Any other questions? Okay, roll call, please. Barnes?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
U.S.?
Yes.
Hansen?
Yes.
Hermoni?
Yes.
Kaiser?
Yes.
All yes. Next item 11, discussion and possible decision approval of monthly treasures report.
Again, the Finance Committee, one of the treasures, relatively briefly, we reviewed the current status of Fund 10 and the resources that are available in it. My general observation is Michelle puts some great information together, and we're very financially healthy at this moment as a district. There's any questions about that, otherwise I would make a motion to approve monthly treasures report. I'll second that.
Okay, so we have a motion by Matt and a second by Kevin. Any questions? If not, roll call, please. Hermoni?
Yes.
Kaiser?
Yes.
Maple?
Yes.
Zepro?
Yes.
Barnes?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
U.S.?
Yes.
Gorman?
Yes.
Hansen?
Yes.
All yes. Item 12, discussion, School Board Superintendent Communications.
We have some different points there. One of the biggest ones is Steve and I had met with the City Council Planning Commission on January 8th. We had a wonderful discussion, heard some of the board's direction and discussion about Fund 80 and community services. And the Planning Commission, with one exception, if the board chooses to make a decision in the future about a community parking lot, the Planning Commission is on board. So that discussion has already been had. We have future discussions to have with strategic planning related to that, which I'll do next week. So I'll lead off this strategic planning session with a discussion about Fund 80. Also, the Mozeny link, I just finished up finalizing my article for the link, it'll also be based on this. There's going to be a lot of information about community services and how we afford community services, but also some recommendations and suggestions about what the board is currently discussing.
David, when is the City Council going to be hearing the parking lot slash removal of the pool?
We are ready to, January 8th.
That was planning.
That was the Plan Commission.
Then that needs to go to City Council's floor?
Well, it's my understanding that they voted and approved it with one exception on the Plan Commission. They said it didn't have to go to the full council. That is what they told Steve and I when we were there. They said it was up to the board, but if you chose to make a decision that way, there's no opposition from the city, with the exception of one vote on the Plan Commission. In terms of some of the rest of it, I'll just skip through it, but a lot of it has to do with a couple of the events that I was at in the community. Some of the wrestling events are kind of fun. I'm an old wrestling coach, so you'll kind of, if you read that part of it, which is point three, I think some people, when you're an old wrestling coach, you kind of yell like an old wrestling coach. So I think some parents had some fun with that, maybe with some pictures. So if you see some things, I'm an old wrestling coach. But I thought they were wrestling pretty well. But the variety show was great, simply outstanding. The 4K sites, was doing some visits to 4K sites. It's wonderful to get around to the sites. I'm going to continue to try to maintain that. And all of them, I talked to them about their thoughts about the half-day, four-day programs, and everybody that I talked to in all the sites, they're all supportive of that change to a group. So the 4K teachers themselves and organizations themselves are supportive. We have a united front with respect to the educators, which I think is exciting. Congratulations to Julie Shell for earning state-level award. It's a reading award from the Central Wisconsin Reading Council, and that presentation is coming, right? And I continue to feel for the Advent team for strategic planning. We have several different things to get ready for that. That is next week, Tuesday. So I'll get an email out tonight, or first thing in the morning, Second Reminded Strategic Planning Group. So we have some members coming into the group. We're excited about the second meeting because really we've collected a lot of input from the community, how we're going to take that input and try to refine it. And really, by the end of this second meeting, we're going to start to get a rough-up of what our strategic planning goals will look like. So it's very exciting. And that's all I have.
Any questions? All right, we're moving on to Old Business. Discussion of possible decision of the approval of the 2021 school calendar.
Yep, everyone has a school calendar right here. We've talked about it before. Made some, some minor adjustments to the green box in the bottom, talking to several different groups, but the, we've taken input about some things and considered some changes and left things the way they are for now. There was some discussion about the first of January. But keeping that a break day, I think, is important. There was some discussion about the January 4th possibly being a break day, but that's not being recommended at this time. So what this schedule does is it builds another snow day into the schedule. I like to draw your attention to May, May 3rd. So I built in a possible makeup day on May 3rd, which if there's not, if we don't need it to make up a snow day, then we would actually have an in-service day during that time. So we're looking at building a schedule that accommodates more snow days than what we currently do, but also building a schedule that accommodates needed professional development, including some valuable curriculum development, but other building level development and team level developments. So it's our recommendation to go with this calendar at this time, but if you have questions...
Motion to approve this, Kevin.
Motion by Matt and a second by Mark. Further discussion.
Just a question on April 2021. Why is the first of May in the bottom of April? Am I reading that wrong?
No, you're reading it right.
That's just because it wouldn't fit on the main calendar.
Okay, I was trying to figure that out.
See, because the main one starts with the second.
Right.
Okay, and I'm like, what am I not understanding?
No, you're right. Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion will carry. Item 13B, discussion of possible decision on half-day 4K.
I have provided board members with some additional information, including a, there should be, since, since we've met, there was that email from a community member or an RN in the community about wraparound services, but that'll be part of what we're talking about in the presentation. This is a topic that I know, you know, Katie has put a lot of time in, I've put a lot of time in, a lot of the teachers have put a good number of time into this to address a lot of different issues that go with this decision.
Good evening, everyone. The last time I was here, you had requested a parent survey. So December 20th, we sent out a parent survey to the 4K through 12th grade parents. We did have it available at our open house, which took place on January 16th. So this is an updated presentation, which you have printouts for. The survey closed on January 17th, so it was open for four weeks. If you look at the survey, the first slide shows you on your printout, do you have children who will be attending 4K in the Mozeny School District in the fall of 2020? Their choices were yes, which you can see 36% have students that are going to be enrolling. No was 24%, and then no, but they will have in the future, within the next three years. So we wanted to capture their information as well. The next slide asked them the question of whether they, if they have children moving into the district or attending, would they approve the half-day 4K every day with bus transportation from their home or daycare to and from that 4K site? But it also said if they qualified for busing. So qualifying for busing is you live within the district boundary areas, but you are two or more miles away from that site. So yes, 63.6% said they do, they would support using the half-day 4K, and 36.4% said they would not. That's 70 people, because there was 110 people that took the survey, and then 30 or 40 said they would not support it. We did follow up because we wanted to know, concerns from families, if you don't support it, like what was their stopping point for saying no? So busing was a thing for all 4K students regardless of where they live. So there were multiple people that added comments. I kind of looked at it, there were three or more people that had the same comment. I tallied it, so out of the comments, 11 people were concerned about busing. Daycare availability was a big one, 22 people were concerned. A lot of people depend somewhere, like it depends on my work schedule, it doesn't work with my work schedule. I don't know how I'm going to pick up my student in the middle of the day if I don't qualify for that busing. So 22 respondents said that they had a concern with daycare. And then busing for open enrolled students, so because three people had mentioned it, I put it on as data.
And just to fit in the email that you have in the packets that occurred after Kelly and Brian and I met, set the agenda, that has to do with daycare availability and wraparound services. So that's, that's what this email is about. It's about this middle piece here, just to help with that concern, which we continue to work on and investigate as we go, but...
Okay, we still wanted to know the people that supported it, those 70 respondents that said they do support half-day 4K four days a week, they still had some concerns. So busing again for all their 4K regardless of where they live is a big item, so 11 people said that. Daycare availability was two from the yes respondents, and then choice of times, three or more people had said that, so I put that in there, so the AMPM. Again, depending on if we go to half-day, then we have shared with parents, it'll be based off of where you live, like your address or your daycare center. I did do some information, Mr. Munoz hasn't seen this yet. I snuck this in here. Busing information, I just kind of wanted to get a bigger picture. If we thought about busing all our 4K kids, because they are so little, it's kind of a five-year average. So you can see the year on the left-hand side, and then students in 4K, the average is about 120. Of those 120, average bus kids are 53.6% of those kids are, or 53.6 students are bused. That percent is 44.2%. If, if none of these kids qualify for busing, so if they all live within zero to two miles of their site, the approximate cost on average is $13,000. So I couldn't determine out of those, let's say in 2020, those 123, 48 bused, I couldn't determine, did they qualify for busing or are they paying for busing? So I just assumed, let's just see what it is. If they all had to pay for busing, what that would cost.
So this is a good way to set an upper rent.
Right, to estimate. And this is really, like Merrill, I contacted that district, they have about the same average as the number of students, and they say 30 to 40% of their 4Kers are bused. So the district's a little bit bigger than us, so we're kind of right in there, about 40% of our students are bused. And then the last I just linked in for you, the two presentations that we have shared.
We did want to bring up one thing that we had received an email from one of the local storybook. They gave us permission just today to mention that they're very willing to open up another room in 15 spots, morning and afternoon.
So she right now has wraparound care for some of her 4K students that she could support, and she told us today she would open up another room if you went to half-day, which is another case. So she'd have 47 total kids out of the approximately 120 average that she could support for wraparound care.
How many kids are even bused? That be the whole 144? Were they, are they two different sessions?
So it's like in 2020 or 2019, on average, about 48 to 59% in the past two years were bused for 4K.
I would make a motion to approve half-day 4K for the next...
I'll second that.
Okay, so we have a motion by Matt and a second by Peter. Further discussion.
Yes, I'm wondering if there has been any discussion or following up and looking to see, because I know legislators last fall have been discussing going back to all-day kindergarten in the state. So have we been looking into and discussing that? Are we prepared to go from half-day for next year potentially to then maybe even to go back to 4K?
I can share at my Austin convention last fall and October, Jim Schrader had shared that he, and he had attorneys there as well, they didn't foresee that coming, that it would be something coming within the next year. There's so much to talk about and discuss for that. So at that convention, they said, yep, it's been talked about, but there wasn't anything moving forward as of now.
Yeah, and the attorneys that I have spoken to at Superintendent Constance say the same thing, that our lobbyists, they don't, they don't see that as an imminent thing. Personally, I think it's a good idea. For four-year-olds to be all day. That's just me, I speak for me.
32 school districts, two years ago, had full day, full week 4K in the state. So that's about what, six, seven percent.
I wonder if that number's the same.
Pardon?
I wonder if that number's still the same today.
Probably goes up a few.
And my, and my comment isn't careful, it's just anecdotal of my own children.
Any other questions? So we do have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion will carry. Moving now into 14 Business, discussion and possible decision, acceptance of lunch program donation. We have a motion by Jess and a second by Peter. Any questions?
Yes, finally, we have a fund that generally goes in, but do we already have a fund that is for technically just kids? I knew what the donation was for, I just didn't know it was rare plans.
What is the negative balance for lunches and food?
No, not right off. I can just...
A barn sauce, it's $2.
Any other questions?
I'm sure that a thank you letter is sent to the individual, like the superintendent, could you please do so?
Yeah, yeah.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion will carry. Item 14B, discussion and possible decision, approval of open enrollment resolution, which comes every January. Are there any changes to what we had from last year on this?
For the numbers?
Or for the resolution in general?
No, I don't believe.
Okay, so it's the same.
I would still move.
I'll second that.
We have a motion by Mike and a second by Mark. Any questions? If not, oh, I'm sorry.
I might have asked this last year, but I don't remember the answer. I see that we open enroll into our district 21 students, so we open enroll out 17. I think that's because we have specialized staff here, but does the money that comes into our district cover the cost of educating the average specialized student that open rolls into our district? Or is that a net loss of revenue to our district?
We don't receive full revenue, we receive eight thousand?
I thought it was around 12, 10 or 12.
Eight, okay, so.
It's covering more. The state also opened it up so that we could bill for extraordinary circumstances.
Right. So, if we receive a student and then they're accepting IEP, in the IEP where we're acknowledging that they have an IEP and we're establishing an IEP, if we determine services, that's something that Mary would do. And Mary is ill today, so I apologize for not mentioning that. But that's something that would be a regular, and we had one of those, I remember we had.
Let me pose a situation. We get a new student that open rolls in, their IEP says they need to be one-to-one with a staff person, get $12,000 a year, but $12,000 doesn't cover the one-to-one cost associated with educating them. I'm just wondering, is there a mechanism for the district at least to break even on that student?
Absolutely.
And you can bill back for one-to-one support services in some circumstances. Bill back to that original, the home district.
There's a process with the state to do it.
That sounds good, thanks.
Any other questions? If not?
The table on here, the 2017 and 18, is that?
Or the year just wasn't changed?
Okay.
It should be 18.
Oh, yep, I see it. Good catch.
It's just like that, May, having April, having.
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion will carry. Item 14C, discussion and possible decision, staffing timeline.
You see a staffing timeline sheet you have in your packets? This is new for this district, something that I'm accustomed to for the better part of a decade. Essentially, what it lays out is a manner in which we're gonna approach staffing, and then the policies that go with it. Of course, offering timelines, so it's broken down, and I want you to note specifically the statutory requirements, and that's why something like this is important. For example, dropping down to March, April 15th deadline for limited layoff and non-renewal notices. There's some statutory deadlines that we just have to fill, and there's certain requirements that we have to meet. So, I think it's always been good practice for me over the years to have this document approved by the board. Now, if we need to change something, for example, when I was talking with Mr. Lehman about a lot of these processes, you'll see high school processes, a lot of times when you're scheduling and staffing any school district, WASSO, the nominee here, you look at the high school first, and then you kind of, you work backwards from that. So, all of his registration timelines and information, which he provided to me, are right here. The reason that becomes important is those numbers in March, from that March meeting to that April meeting, the March meeting will have specific recommendations based on numbers, class sizes, these sorts of things. So, those things will start to come to you in these meetings. So, what this does, it establishes a work plan for us, but also for the board in terms of what you can expect from us in terms of budgeting and staffing. Including teacher contracts being issued, which is also in there in April.
Questions?
So, we have that down as a decision.
Correct.
I'll make the motion, Joe. The staffing timeline.
Okay, motion by Kelly is your second?
I'll second it.
And a second by Mike. Further discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion will carry. Item 15, other reports, last week.
Hey, that is me and me and a big conference.
Tomorrow. We're gonna be there.
Ian, I'm the WSB rep, and I don't know, I went through a lot of this. So, pretty much, I talked to Diane about one of the busing issues, I talked to Jess about it, one of the issues in the resolution. So, if anybody has any questions, anything they want me to know?
You want those, you wanna know privately as opposed to?
You know what I mean.
Yes, please. Thank you. All right, thank you. Item 15B, CISA 9.
Do you have the minutes of the meeting and the, the handout? Are we talking? And quote unquote?
Thank you. Item 16, future agenda items.
Couple of future agenda items that have come up during the board meeting, just during the board meeting. It's gonna be a discussion and likely the parking lot decision in February, so everybody has that. But you'll see a lot of writing about it, that's, it's gonna be very public, it's gonna be in the link. It's gonna be at strategic planning, it's already been at the planning commission. So, you'll see a lot of public about that. So, there'll be a lot of talk about it, which is good. It's a very public thing, and it's gonna be out there, so. That's something in February, it'll definitely be up. We'll also have some discussion and decisions in February about Policy 7510, which has to do with community services, community services and what we're paying, but that'll probably come out of finance committee. A lot of that'll be coming out of finance committee.
Question in regard to this little parking lot? I understand that's a question that I might recommend to you that you split the questions. So, one is, do we operate and repair the current waiting pool? And if, depending on the answer to that, what do you do with that property? So, I mean, we have to make decisions as far as what to do with the pool. And then, one possible next decision is the parking lot, but it could be something else, right?
Yes.
Just so that we know we have to address one right away, and the other could be a decision that comes at any point in time.
I talked to a lot of people at work, and their kids use the little pool. Some haven't invented a big pool, and it's, you know, somebody takes it outside, so it's. Like, there's a certain functional analysis.
I mean, I think the decision, well, we'll discuss it next time.
Okay.
I think it's about, yeah, take one. But two things, we look back, maybe it has a possibility about 4K funding.
Oh, yeah, the, how much we're reimbursing in off-site, non-school, off-site.
What we're spending with sending up to the sites, et cetera. And then, is there possibly something hanging back with the Boys and Girls Club that maybe we can get something over, like the summer pool here?
I've been emailing, just off conversations with Mr. Bruley. A lot of their middle school, so, you know, I've been kind of working on the side a little bit just to make sure that he understood that some of their relationships, it's a lot of middle school connection to high school. So, there's a lot of pieces like that. I think there's some opportunities there for us, but there's no decisions yet. But there's definitely some possibilities to discuss. I think it's a wonderful presentation, and we may not be ready by February, but we'll put it on there.
I have a lot of familiarity with, and I don't want to find myself in a conflict. I don't have a conflict of interest with Matt, the CEO. I just know a lot about his background and what he comes to the wass of Boys and Girls Clubs from a CEO position with a manufacturing company in Oshkosh. And this is what he chose to do, rather than quote-unquote, make the big bucks in the corporate world. This is where his heart and his interests are. And he moved here and started a second part of his life career heading up this organization. And I know a lot about the organization because of my other relationship I have with him through a business group, a part of. And so, if anybody wants to chat about that.
He didn't speak, but he's a teacher by training, and we have some similar people that we know because we're from the same part of Wisconsin, Oshkosh and Fond du Lac. So, he and I, Mr. James, the CEO, we had some good discussions about that. So, we'll be ready in February, but let's, it's surveys, there's quite a bit of work done in the front. I would have, but it might be March.
Okay, that's fine. Anybody else? Moving on to item 17, movement into closed executive session, I would in motion. Okay, we have a motion by Matt and a second by Jess. Roll call please. Barnes?
Yeah.
Bowman? U S? Gorman? Yes. Hanson? Hermany?
Yes.
Kaiser?
Yes.
Good to see you again.
You too. Always a pleasure seeing you.
Just keep the faith, dog.